Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Tuesday, April 12th, 2022 Oxford Board of Selectmen Meeting, time being 7:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am advising all those in attendance this evening that this meeting is being recorded by the Town of Oxford. In addition to the Town of Oxford, Mr. Robert King of 59 Quobah Gav is also recording the meeting this evening. At this time, I'd ask for everybody to rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is going to be swearing-in ceremony of Officers Michael Buxton and Patrick Chalker, Chief Sad. I must say, we're probably gonna have to hire some more police officers. I'm really enjoying the attendance this evening.
We could always hire more.
You should charge.
We're gonna get more people to the meeting. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Madam Town Manager, members of the audience. Good to see everybody here tonight. I'm pleased to present two new recruits to the board this evening, who's gonna be sworn in by Assistant Town Clerk Tom Sullivan, the first recruit that I'm gonna introduce to. You've already met him, but I'll introduce him to the audience, is Mr. Patrick Chalker. So, Mr. Chalker, if you would please come in. If you notice, he has the entire on for the academy, which starts a week from today, the 19th of April. So, Mr. Chalker is a graduate of Community Christian High School in 2016, afterwards he took some college courses at Westfield State College in 2017. He is currently serving in the United States National Guard in the Infantry Division since 2017. Mr. Chalker has been deployed overseas to active duty in Operation Enduring Freedom. He served in Djibouti and Somalia. During his time serving with the Guard, he received the Combat Infantry Badge, the Army Achievement Medal, the Army Services Ribbon, and the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal. He is described as a leader, disciplined, and goal-driven, an individual with compassion and the ability to make sound judgment. Mr. Chalker is a resident of North Oxford, and we are fortunate to be in a position to hire him and get him on board with us.
So with that, I will have Mr. Sullivan come on up and administer the oath.
I, Patrick Chalker, do solemnly swear.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States.
And will support the Constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States.
I will obey the lawful orders of all my superior officers.
I will obey the lawful orders of all my superior officers.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties incumbent on me.
And perform all the duties incumbent on me.
As an Oxford police officer.
As an Oxford police officer.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeable to the rules and the regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth in the United States.
And the laws of the Commonwealth in the United States.
On my honor, I will never betray my integrity.
On my honor, I will never.
Betray my integrity.
Betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable for our actions.
And others accountable for our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of my community and the agency I serve.
And uphold the values of my community and the agency which I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Selectmen, Chief Sad, and the rest of the Command Team, as well as the residents of Oxford for giving me this opportunity, and I'm excited to get to work for you guys. So, thank you.
Our next recruit is Mr. Michael Buxton. Mr. Buxton is a graduate of Worcester Technical High School. He has an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Quincyman Community College, which he obtained in 2016. He is a graduate of the Worcester County Sheriff's 46th Basic Recruit Training Academy in 2016, and he has been employed with the Sheriff's Department since graduating in 2016. During the background of Mr. Buxton, several individuals described him as being reliable, competent, and also having the ability to work with minimal supervision. Mr. Buxton is a resident of Oxford and lives here with his wife Chelsea. Mr. Sullivan?
I, Michael Buxton, do solemnly swear.
I, Michael Buxton, do solemnly swear.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
And the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the United States.
I will obey the lawful orders of all my superior officers.
I will obey the lawful orders of all my superior officers.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As an Oxford police officer.
As an Oxford police officer.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth in the United States.
And the laws of the Commonwealth in the United States.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my integrity.
I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
To hold myself and others accountable for my actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of my community.
And uphold the values of my community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir. Just like to take this opportunity and thank the Board of Selectmen, Chief Sad, Lieutenant Marcelonos, the entire Command Staff here in Oxford. I look forward to the next challenging six months, and I can't wait to graduate and be able to serve this great town and the great people of this community. Thank you very much.
And just on behalf of the entire department, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen, also my Command Staff, for helping in finding these two fine individuals. Also, we swore in Justina Lapierre's last month, as you remember. So, we were very fortunate to get all three of them, and I just want to thank the board for recognizing the needs that we have within the Police Department and being able to hire these individuals. So, once again, thank you very much, and I thank the community at large as well for the support that they give us on a regular basis through tough times. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Sad, can we have the candidates come back in for the photo? Please. Slidepaw.
Not yet.
Good evening.
Not yet. I'm aware of. I think I got an email or a text from them. I think I'll be able to get there around 7:15.
Okay.
If you want to do the next.
Yeah, we can start with the telecommunications one. we will move on to the next. We'll hold off on that one. We'll move on to Public Safety Telecommunicators Week for April 10th through the 16th. First, I would like to entertain a motion for the board to declare April 10th through the 16th as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Oxford.
I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. Then, Selectmen LeBlanc?
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical service, and whereas prompt fire, police, or medical response is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are professionals with expertise in police and police-fire medical and dispatch protocols, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators monitor first responders' radioactivity, thus ensuring their safety while providing a vital link of information, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators of the Town of Oxford have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas the public safety communicators of the Town of Oxford have radiated strength and calm while providing support to first responders and making a difference in the lives of our citizens, and whereas we are grateful for the level of important work accomplished by the Town of Oxford telecommunicators, and I apologize, I might pronounce a name wrong here, but Trini Derry, Stephanie Divakis, Kayla Fontaine, Joan LaPlante, Brittany Morgan, Stephanie Natali, Brianna Parker, Elizabeth Rivera Zipian, Joan Summers, Joanne Summers, and Daniel Webster Jr. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Oxford proclaim the week of April 10th to 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our town and citizens safe, given under our hands this 12th day of April, 2022.
Thank you. I think we have some of the telecommunicators here in the audience. If you would like to come up forward to the table. Did this one get signed by everybody?
Yes.
So, we're gonna go down for our picture with this one as well.
Of course you may. Would you like to come back here instead?
On behalf of the Town Chief Command Staff, I'd like to thank everybody for the recognition. We have a great crew of dispatchers, and as has been previously stated, the hours gotta go unnoticed. We want to thank everybody, and we're gonna go back to work and get a few swag bags that local businesses donated to us to enjoy. And then, again, I want to thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Madam Town Manager, I just wanted to say a couple words. I have the pleasure of supervising the Communications Department. We have tonight here Joanne Summers, Brianna Parker, Elizabeth Rivera Zipian, and Stephanie Divakis, the four of our core members, but they're all great people, and I can honestly say that they are the lifeline for our department. They are the first order that comes in. We rely on them heavily, and in my career, I've seen such an evolution of what they do turn into a career and a profession, and they should be proud of what they do for us every day, and I'm proud of them, and I'm proud to be their supervisor. So, I want to thank them tonight, and thank you all. Thank you, sir. Board members, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Sure. To the dispatchers, I would just like to say thank you, because every time I called to say that my dog has got out, you guys know, oh, yes, absolutely, we know him. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and it's appropriate that Kelly is here too, because she knows him as well. So, but thank you. Yes, truly thank you for all you do.
I'd just like to say thank you very much for your service, and people in the town really need to understand the importance of your position, and it is a matter of life and death, many of the things that you deal with. So, on behalf of the citizens, I do thank you for what you do. Yes, thank you.
Also, it's no secret, I am a professional firefighter, and I wholeheartedly appreciate the job that you as dispatchers, telecommunicators have to do. I have had to sit with you for just one eight-hour period on my department, and that was way too much for me. The stress you have to deal with, the, you know, you may get people screaming and yelling at you, and you've done nothing yet. So, the stress you go under, the professionalism that you maintain as police and fire are getting stressed on their scenes, and you are that mediator trying to bring everything back to a calm, and then I know a lot of times with your stressful situations, it takes a little bit longer for the, you know, the rest of the first responders, because you are also first responders, to get back to you and check in on you as well, and, you know, I think you don't get thanked enough for the work that you do behind the scenes. You don't get seen by the public very often. Everybody knows your voice, but they don't get to see you, and I just wanted to say thank you. At this time, we are gonna do recognition of and citation presentation to the Assistant Animal Control Officer Edward Hart for his recent work with animal rescues in Ukraine. We have a representative from Joe McKenna's office here. I'm sorry. We have Representative Joe McKenna here. I apologize.
Thank you very much. I'm State Rep. Joe McKenna, and I was actually speaking with Representative Paul Frost earlier this evening, who is tied up with another event across his district, and it had come to our attention, the work that you had been doing, Ed, in the Ukraine, not the Ukraine, in Ukraine, to provide for those animals that have been displaced by the unjust invasion, and it's remarkable the work that you did. So, we have the deepest gratitude and appreciation for the work that you did. I'm heading to Boston tomorrow, where there is a citation that looks like that one on the wall there. So, you can imagine that I have a citation to present to you, and it'll read, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to you at heart with the deepest gratitude and appreciation for the work that you've done to provide care for those pets and animals displaced by the invasion. The entire membership extends its gratitude and best wishes for continued success in all endeavors, signed by the Speaker of the House, by myself, by Representative Paul Frost." So, it's such a selfless gesture that you've gone out and done. You didn't need to. You certainly could have stayed here in the comfort of your home, but you took that endeavor on, and we have the deepest gratitude and appreciation. So, thank you for all you've done.
Looks like we have some photos here.
That was us. We replaced a German team who had been there for four weeks since the beginning.
Wow.
They were grateful for us showing up.
Yeah.
We did a lot of work with the refugees coming across. It was hard to see a lot of them. You could tell the stress and pressure. Some had wounds.
Mm-hmm.
And we did what we could. We fed them. We triaged them. We gave them food and crates and things to help them all.
Oh, nice. Very nice. Mr. Chairman, if I might, Ed has been a volunteer for the International Fund for Animal Welfare for so many years, and I know you're gonna read a proclamation that outlines that, but knowing just how selfless he has been to get a call and to go to the border, knowing that he didn't know quite what he was going to be asked to do, and to see those animals coming with their owners or just roaming after the bombings and, you know, looking for their owners, and it's not just pets. We all know there's horses and there's domesticated animals and there's zoo animals, and I will remind everybody that Ed is considered one of the most highly prized professionals in the state to deal with large animal rescues. He offers training on a regular basis to and through state agencies for animal control offices across the state, and we actually had a big training back in the fall, and Ed headed that up. So, he has an incredible amount of skills, and knowing that he was willing to do that on a moment's notice, and Kelly had called to say he's already on the plane and he's going. So, I know you have some kind words, but we missed you, but we all recognize the feeling of duty that you feel in these very, very dire kinds of situations. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll let you continue.
Yes. Vice Chair LeBlanc?
I will entertain a motion. We need to take a vote to sign the citation for Mr. Hart. Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative.
Excellent. Thanks, Ed, for letting us do that little formality. On behalf of the Oxford Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank and honor Edward Ed Hart, and whereas Ed serves the Town of Oxford in the role of Assistant Animal Control Officer, whereas Ed has been an active member of the International Fund for Animal Welfare, IFAW, for 10 years, and whereas through his volunteer work with IFAW, Ed has traveled to California during the wildfires to work in shelters and feed and water animals left behind, to Memphis, Tennessee during the historic tornadoes and ensuing flooding, where he rescued animals from damaged homes and assisted in a shelter, to New York during Hurricane Sandy, to Dominica, to the Caribbean, to assist in a parrot rescue during Hurricane Maria, and most recently to the Ukraine-Poland border, helping to triage animals fleeing from the war in Ukraine with the refugees. And whereas Ed's care and compassion for the well-being of animals has brought comfort to countless animals and to the humans who own them. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of the Oxford, the Selectmen of the Town of Oxford, and the Town Manager, recognize Ed for his generous heart, gift of time, and continued dedication to the cause, given under our hands this 12th day of April, 2022. Thank you very much, Ed. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excellent. Do you mind, unless we take a photo?
Board members, is there anything else you'd like to pass along to Ed?
Just like to thank him for what he did. Two weeks ago, I attended the dedication of the monument for our veterans in the town, and we talked an awful lot about people going above and beyond, giving back to the community and to the world, and it's thanks to people like Ed that are willing to do this rather than complain and knock everything down. They go out of their way. They go above and beyond the duty to do things that make the world a better place to live. So, thank you, Ed, for what you did. I think you're making Oxford proud, and I wish you continued success in whatever you do. Thank you. And I've said it so many times, it's just another prime example, Ed is, of the people we have in this town working for us. I don't care if you're in the police, dispatches, fire, animal control, I mean, DPW, the list goes on and on. Wonderful, wonderful, excellent people. We are very fortunate in this town, and can't say enough, but you're a great man to risk going over there and stuff and that, and that type of a world. So, congratulations. You deserve it.
I'd just like to say that you are the definition of selfless service, and not only do you make Oxford proud, but I can tell by your family sitting next to you, you make them very proud as well. So, thank you for all you do.
Oh.
And after that, that will segue us into our next item on the agenda, which is Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week for April 10th through the 16th. We will do a declaration and presentation of a proclamation to the Oxford Animal Control. So, I will entertain a vote to declare April 10th through the 16th Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week in Oxford.
I make that motion.
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. And next, we have a proclamation for you.
Let me read it. You want to read it? You want me to read it?
Okay.
Whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated the second week of April each year as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, and whereas various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control offices and animal service staff for the dedicated service they provide to the citizens, public safety, and public service agencies, departments across the nation, and whereas every day, animal control offices put themselves in potentially dangerous situations.
Whereas we recognize Animal Control Officer Kelly Flynn and Assistant Animal Control Officer Edward Hart for the many dedicated and long hours of service they perform in serving animals and residents of our community, and fulfilling the town's commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Oxford proclaims the week of April 10th to April 16th, 2022, as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week in the Town of Oxford, and encourages all citizens to join us in expressing their sincere appreciation for the service and dedication of our animal control employees, given under our hands this 12th day of April 2022. And we'll invite the Animal Control Department to the front.
Do the board members have anything they'd like to add?
Just like to thank them for their service. Second time for Ed, first time for Kelly. But again, we, we take for granted what our people in our community do. And repeat what Dennis said, we're very fortunate to have the people we have working in our community today. And they're just another example of the, the people that have, that we have in our town that make our town a better place to live. So thank you.
Yes. Thanks to both of you. Thank you.
I would just like to appreciate how proactive and involved in the town you are with, you know, notifying owners when you've gotten a hold of their animals, or using the community as a whole to try and locate lost animals. I know that both of you work very, very hard throughout this town, and I believe you work in partnership with other towns as well. So thank you for everything that you do. The next item on the agenda this evening is a continued public hearing, a special permit for animals for Teresa R. Sullivan-Gigliant of 23 Whitting Road. This public hearing was opened on and continued from March 22nd by agreement with the applicant. The continued public hearing notice was posted appropriately and mailed to Abutters, an applicant, on March 23rd, 2022. Let's see. So in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 3, Section 3.8 of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Oxford, Teresa R. Sullivan-Gigliant?
Ginlat.
Ginlat? I apologize. Ginlat of 23 Whitting Road, Oxford, Mass. 01540, has applied to the Board of Selectmen for a new special permit of animals to keep up to a maximum of 20 chickens and one rooster at 23 Whitting Road, Oxford, Mass. 01540. The property is currently owned by Terry and Timothy and identified on Oxford Assessors' Map 48, Parcel A11, and at the Registry of Deeds and Book 28190, Page 19. Please take notice that the Oxford Board of Selectmen will continue the public hearing concerning the special permit for animals to Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, at 7:30 PM. This hearing has been continued from the original hearing date of March 22nd, 2022. This meeting will be held at Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass., Second Floor Conference Room. Written comments from the public will be accepted prior to and at the hearing and will be submitted and recorded at the hearing. Would the applicant please come forward? Oh, I, okay. I didn't think we closed it last time, but.
You did, and then they continued it.
Yeah, and then we continued it. Do you like to tell us about the permit?
Just to have the chickens.
How long have you had the chickens for?
Since I had a saddle pulmonary embolism back in 2020.
Okay. And you currently have how many chickens?
There's actually 22 and a rooster.
22 and a rooster. If we approve this, this evening, what are you going to do with the other two? It's for 20 chickens.
Donate them to my kid, my sister. She has a farm out in Cuba, New York.
Okay, okay.
There's a couple of them I can get rid of.
Okay. Kelly, would you like to come up here, present the report and recommendations, please?
So quite, quite often, people get chickens and they don't realize that they're supposed to have a special permit. So lots of times, they already have the chickens when we are made aware of it. But so, good evening. And Ms. Terry Sullivan?
Ginlat.
Ginlat of 23 Whiting Road has applied for a special permit for 20 chickens and one rooster. Her housing is sufficient for that number of chickens. She has a 10 by 10 chicken coop and a 20 by 20 outdoor pen with predator-proof netting on the top. And also, her whole yard is fenced in, so sometimes if they're home, they let the chickens out in the yard. But that's all fenced in as well. She's installed predator deterrence called Red Eyes to prevent predators from attacking the chickens. And she also has emotion-sensitive lights on the chicken coop and the deck, so at night, if something moves in there, it puts the lights on and helps scare them away. She uses fly containers to, to keep control of the fly population. And chickens eat flies and bugs, too, so that helps. The waste removal, she uses the waste products in her garden and uses them as fertilizer. I did have one complaint a couple of years ago about the roost, well, actually, she had three roosters at the time. And I did have one complaint. The roosters, I think, got, they were competing for the chickens and everything, so they got them a little riled up. But I did speak to the neighbor that did make that complaint, and she's perfectly happy with, she only has one rooster now. She said the noise level is, you know, absolutely fine, and she has no problem with her keeping the rooster. She has used a no crow rooster collar in the past, which I never even heard of one of those till I went up there. But it's like a collar that they can wear that greatly reduces the noise of a crow. I think that's it. It is also like a little more rural area. It's not like right downtown Oxford, where the houses are right on top of each other. So my recommendation would be that the special permit be approved for 20 chickens and one rooster, whose name is Rue, with the stipulation that the rooster will not be replaced when he passes away.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take comments from Abutters.
Please, may I ask?
Yes, please, please come forward. What's that?
Do we need to swear anybody in for this, or no?
I'm not a dodger, so.
Oh, yeah.
But maybe he'll come forward and.
Yeah, I'll just have you come forward, state your name and address for me, please.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Warren. I live at 82 Old Southbridge Road. Hi, Terry. How are you? We agree with Kelly. We don't have an issue with Rue at this point. A couple of years ago, when I called to make the complaint, and let me just clarify something, I wasn't the only one complaining in the neighborhood. A lot of the neighbors were concerned about the noise. There were other calls made, and I also did not receive any information telling me that I could put something in writing for tonight, but I didn't need, need to really do that. If the noise level stays the way it is right now, I don't have an issue with having a rooster. I know that she's not supposed to have a rooster. It's against town ordinances, but I don't have a problem with it. Two years ago, again, the three roosters were competing, and they were nonstop all day. I nearly had a breakdown, and that is the truth. I'm fine now. The one rooster is, is fine. If it can remain the same, I would go along with Kelly's recommendation. But if it does get worse and it starts all over again, I will have to make a call. But right now, I'm, we're really happy with the way things are, and we appreciate everything that Terry and Tim have done to enable us to have a more peaceful neighborhood, because they were very loud. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Did we receive any other communication in writing from any Abutters? Okay. Board members, do you have any questions? No questions? I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. The public hearing is closed. Pleasure of the board with the permit.
I make a motion, we approve this permit as requested, with the understanding that once, what's the rooster's name?
Rue.
Once Rue is gone, there will be no more roosters.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Abstain?
Yes. Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's three in affirmative, one abstention. The special permit has been granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
The next item on the agenda is the Hannah Harwood Scholarship Award Vote. The award amount this year is for $1,000, as recommended by the Treasurer Collector, based on the fund balance. The award is paid in two installments, the first with the award, and the second upon submission of grades and, of grades and proof of second semester enrollment in an acceptable course of study as dictated in the policy. The Board is in receipt of the application, and what would the pleasure of the Board be?
I make a motion that we award the scholarship for 2022 to the applicant who applied.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That's for an affirmative. Applicant number one is in award of the grant. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda is approval of Town Manager's appointments to the Disability Commission under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J, of Jennifer Pearson and Angela Rochello.
Yes, thank you.
Rochello.
What is it?
Her name is Rochello.
Thank you.
The French.
Yes.
Him coming out. Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. There are two individuals that I'm putting before you this evening. We have vacancies on the Disability Commission, which you know had been formed in this town a couple of years ago, because we know how important the actual voice for support and also for advocacy that these individual members on this commission actually provide for the town. So before you, we have Angelina Rochello, who has expressed a continued interest in serving on the Disability Commission. She is part of the Guardian Angel Senior Services. She has been able to offer the town an opportunity to have her experience, because she has worked in the home healthcare industry for over 30 years, and also has been serving frail elders who are disabled, and has also cared for disabled family members. So I think she would offer that perspective. It's one of the perspectives that we do look for, either someone who has a professional background in, and that's one of the things the Disability Commission qualifications offer to people seeking to get on the commission. It's if they have a professional background, and the other is if they are disabled or they have experienced disability themselves. So I think she'd be a terrific addition, and I think Jennifer Pearson is another one who has expressed a lot of interest and could be very helpful with the Disability Commission in a number of ways, because of her skill set. She did serve on a Disability Commission in the, a close community of Grafton, and has also been somebody who's been part of a continued advocacy on behalf of disabled adults, and has also worked with disabled children, and also has a background educationally in psychology. So she's someone who's advocated for the rights of the disabled, and I think would be a really great person to, to be able to join the commission, and, which is still relatively new and continuing after they had formed their bylaws to work with my office in sort of enunciating some of their priority projects, which we're taking into consideration with our capital improvement program. So both of them would be great. I strongly advocate you accept their nomination to join.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept Angelina Rochello of 3 Old Farm Road, Oxford, and Jennifer Pearson of 258 Main Street, Oxford, to the Disability Commission under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes also. That's for an affirmative. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the annual town meeting warrant. The Board is in receipt of the proposed warrant article. The only thing that needs to be added to that is Article 18. We are still waiting for that to come back from Town Council. So if we make a motion to approve the warrant, it would, it should be subject to final review by Town Council.
Of, of Article 18?
The warrant as a whole should be subject to final review of Town Council.
Oh, okay, got it.
Sure. Sure, Mr. Chairman, it's a pretty straightforward warrant for a spring town meeting. The Articles 1 through 7 are routine articles that we put on the warrant to, you know, pay prior year bills, to accept Chapter 90 money for our highway road improvements, our revolving funds and setting the spending limits to them, placing funds into our compensated absence fund, our stabilization fund, and our OPIP fund, which are all part of our financial management policy. So very routine. Articles 8 through 9, 8 and 9, are actually looking to fund, one, the, the fact that we're at a revalu- revaluation year for the, every five years, and so we're going to apply some money to bring in some professional expertise to get through a reval year, which is very big for a small assessors department to handle. Ambulance receipts transfer, we do that on a regular basis to be able to supplement the needs of the fire department, and so that would be a actual transfer. That is pretty routine. Then we have, of course, the largest article in terms of public expenditure is the operational budget for fiscal year 2023, along with the capital outlay article for our capital, funding our capital planning program. We also, since we have changed our funding mechanism for our PEG programming, we have now a routine article in which we have to apply funding from one source into that departmental budget operation. And we do have one article, and I can see that we have officers who are here this evening along with our police chief. I know this Board has entertained at a different prior period of time, the notion of potentially removing the department and the community from civil service. I don't know if the chief would like to speak to that article. It is being sponsored by the police chief and myself, but I wanted to let you know that there are components there. We feel that this is the time period to actually put this. We feel that this is the time period to actually put this article forward. In the past, we thought about doing that, but there was also some concerns that perhaps we weren't getting all components to fit together so that the department as a whole would not only be being removed from civil service, but would also have changes in its management structure under the chief, and he will be the best person also to speak to that. The other articles on the warrant are zoning articles, which you have already remanded to the planning board, which held its hearing last night. They have not finalized their recommendations on those articles, but we have gotten some indication from our Director of Planning and Economic Development, Tony Sousa, that those four articles, which include the marijuana overlay, zoning district change, zoning map amendments, split zoning article, and large-scale battery energy storage systems article, all four of those articles, we believe will get favorable recommendation from the planning board this time around. And then we have two articles that have to do with enforcement. One of them, I know the vice chair and all the board is very aware of the changes that have been done to our waterways, namely two ponds in which there's been some restrictions placed upon them for fuel-powered motors, but the conservation enforcement has not really been there. It's a very unusual thing not to have the Conservation Board and its Conservation Agent charged with that, as opposed to having the Board of Selectmen, which aren't actually as well-versed in the conservation efforts that that board does. So, the Conservation Board had actually talked about this more than, two years ago when I first got here, when they were actually looking at trying to restrict and improve the water, restrict fuel-powered boats and engines, and were hoping that they could improve the water quality on these water bodies. But at that time, we had some discussion about how to enforce that. So, not putting the chicken before the egg, even though we just had a permit about that. We felt first was, would the town have an appetite to make the bylaw changes, to restrict those kinds of powered engines on the water bodies, which the town unanimously had adopted in two separate town meetings for both Robinson Pond and Carrbunkel, and now this will help with the enforcement mechanism, make it more clear. So, that is the article that we were talking about. We want one more time to have legal counsel take a look at that. And then Article 20 will be the repeal of certain sections of the general bylaws related to enforcement. As you know, we've spent a lot of money going to district courts through enforcement for, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. It's actually 19, not 20. Adoption of the Massachusetts General Law with regards to Chapter 40U. We're seeking to try to not continue to spend an enormous amount of money in district courts with very little return. District courts don't typically like to have to weigh in on enforcing bylaws, even though they're obligated to, and we have a enforcement provision in our bylaws already with a hearing officer, and Al Banfield has been the hearing officer for years and never been utilized. So, this is trying to actually provide local residents and the town the ability to actually bring compliance in a way that will be less costly and, I think, more readily accessible to residents. So, we're hoping to have that adopted. And then the final two articles, Article 20 and Article 21, one relates and is being entitled repeal of certain sections of the general bylaws, Chapter 2, Section 7, and Chapter 11, and the other one is a new Chapter 3 of the general bylaws. Both of those were submitted by citizen petition, and they will be discussed and on the warrant for town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Town Manager. Board members?
Do you want a motion or do you want discussion?
We can have discussion first.
Okay. Jen, in regards to, I saw this on Friday. Bear with me here. I just have to find the right number. Oh, okay, excuse me. Article 13, in regards to the civil service. So, I think we had this either a year or two ago to try to get out of, to try to get police out of civil service, and I don't believe it passed at town meeting, which is obviously why it's here now.
No, we passed over it.
It got passed over. Excuse me. Thank you. But you made comment about there were some other pieces here that now look like it might work, and I'm wondering, getting out of the legalese piece of this, what else is in here that would change the way things are, unless I'm reading it wrong, and it's just getting out of civil service?
So, I don't know. Chief, would you want to speak to it? Because this is something I think that's very important. It's not just you jumping out of civil service. One has to actually go with the other, hand in glove, then we can talk about that.
At this point in time, I'm glad to be a co-sponsor of this particular article. As you know, our workforce is changing, as it is in many other professions. The days of officers coming on board and staying for 10, 20 years, in any profession, really, the younger generation tends to move. Therefore, we're facing more and more vacancies. With the events that have occurred in the news over the last several years, we've seen, not only us here locally across the state nationwide, the number of police officers or people wanting to enter this profession has drastically been reduced. That's evident for us with our last list. On our last list, as you saw, we only had nine Oxford residents. In prior years, we would have 20, 30, 40 names that we would have to vet. So, I look at this last time around, and you just saw the candidates. There are no more Oxford candidates. There are no more candidates on that list unless we go to the Springfield's, the Brooklyn, wherever we'd have to go. We're going way out of town. Quite frankly, people that would not come here to work. So, if they're not on that list and they're not within that framework, we cannot hire them. So, as we move forward into '23 and '24, and we face not only a changing, moving workforce with people moving on for whatever reason, we're also coming into a period of time in our police department where we're facing retirements of senior personnel. So, moving forward, the community, the department, needs to be nimble. We need to be able to move efficiently and quickly in order to hire people. The biggest challenges facing law enforcement today are recruitment and retention of officers. Those are struggles that we face, not only locally, but across the state as well. So, there are programs out there, there are people out there that we simply cannot interview because they didn't take a multiple choice exam. I think the days of looking at people solely because they scored well on a multiple choice exam have gone by the wayside. There are many people out there, such as Justina Lapierre, who we hired, who have taken the initiative and been self-sponsored, incurred that expense, put themselves through, really motivated individuals that we can't get. There are two local colleges that run programs that individuals not only get a bachelor's degree, but they also get an academy train certificate when they get out. So, all you simply need to do is interview them. If they fit your bill, you hire them. If they didn't take the civil service list, we can't interview them. So, we can't operate within those parameters anymore. That's my main focus for coming forward on co-sponsoring this in conjunction with the manager, is recruitment. And civil service, I see moving forward, will not fit that bill for this community. And there are several communities right now who, that are facing major shortfalls of personnel, and they don't have people on their list to hire. So, we all know what that means. That's more of a burden placed on the individuals left behind, forced shifts, overtimes. We can just imagine what that turns into, right? Budget busters, stressed-out personnel, people not getting the service that they deserve from their offices because they're working too many hours. So, I don't want to see us move in that direction, and I think now is the time to make the move. And I know we all, including these gentlemen here, all came up through this system, and there was a place and time for this system, but I'm a believer that it has run its course. It's run its course. Why restrict us moving forward as to who we can and can't hire? We should believe it, hit indeed, go locally, giving a preference to locals. We can still do that. Give preference to Oxford people that qualify, state, and even nationally. Let's open it right up. I mean, there are offices working in big cities now. We all see the struggles that they face. They're looking to move to a community such as ours. They would love to work here. There are a lot of people who would love to work here, but if they didn't take that civil service test, we can't touch them. We need to be able to hire on our own unique timetable. It's very fluid. People come and go. Promotions happen. We can't wait for civil service to give a list in the fall and audit. We have needs now, so we can't wait until the fall. And then we can't wait for two months, three months, to get the results of the exam. Things happen in a matter of days here. We were fortunate to get these two young lads you saw earlier into a police academy by one day. If one more day had gone by, we registered them in the morning and the class filled in the afternoon. So, that's how quickly things happen. So, when I hear that we have an opening, I want to go to the manager the very next day, sit down with her, we have an opening, let's hire. Okay, move. Let's get it done. There were two people on our list, because we didn't move quick enough, that got picked up by other departments that if they were here, they would have been in strong consideration. So, the parameters of the list have simply expired, and again, I am one of the individuals over the next few years who will be moving on. So, I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing it, or I'm co-sponsoring this for the department as a whole because I see it as the best move going forward. As a longtime resident of the town, and I anticipate being a longtime resident moving forward, I want to make sure this department remains whole, remains healthy, that they can address these unexpected needs as they come up, and we simply can't do it efficiently and effectively right now.
So, Chief, if I may, six years ago, when I was first on board here on the board, one of the first things I said was, I need to be able to interview the best candidates possible in order to give you the best people on the force. And so, I'm fine with this. I don't have, personally, I don't have an issue with it. I just want to make sure, is there anything else in here that's changing?
What else is changing is the appointing authority is shifting from the Board of Selectmen over to the town manager. And also, the primary responsibility.
Well, that's important for us to know.
Yes. And the primary responsibility for running the day-to-day of the PD will rest with the Chief of Police. Right now, the way it's written on the 4197, the Board of Selectmen is the entity that establishes rules, regulation, policy, procedure for the department moving forward, technically the way it is adopted.
So, that's the other piece of this?
That's the other piece. It would shift.
So, how come we're not, I mean, what's wrong with that? We can have a discussion about that, right?
We will. I think we already did previously, the Board of Selectmen had formed a small subcommittee, and one of the things that we had talked about is that it's not just a matter of removing civil service. I think there's not a member on this board who would say, when was the last time somebody on the Board of Selectmen actually proposed a policy for the chief? If you're running the department. It's a bit antiquated compared to how other departments are running. A strong chief, which I think this chief has proven he can do and has been able to do, I think the department is looking for that. That's one of the reasons it didn't go forward before because as we entered into civil service through Special Act of the Charter and need to actually go to the legislature, we didn't realize how the town had actually entered into it years ago. Most towns just adopt civil service as a matter of a bylaw, and you just change it. So, that's one of the reasons the chief said, okay, there's a little bit more complexity here, while we held back, two other communities went, got rid of civil service and implemented, you know.
Most recently, Webster and Charlton.
And implemented the aspect that most people expect, a high-performing law enforcement officer with a management and administrative background. That's what we want from our police chief, and trying to, you know, take some of the politics that have, I think, encumbered the department years before some of the people who have served on here, and perhaps during some of the years some people have had served on here, we're trying to remove some of that, whether it's through a civil service appointment or whether it's through one of the chief's recommendation for leadership positions within the department, looking for the best candidate, looking for the administrative oversight, and having your skill set to really evaluate that.
And that was a key component for the body as a whole, to see that as a package moving forward.
Interesting.
And, you know, when it was brought forward several years ago, too, one of the reasons that it didn't pass is there was no plan in place as to, okay, if it's removed, how are we going to hire? How are we going to promote? Since then, we've drafted policies to address hiring practices and promotional practices, which have been reviewed not only with the body, but also with town council, which need to be further refined as we move forward in this, if this occurs. So, I think we'll be good in that regard.
I have a question, too. Like the fire department, doesn't the fire chief, they don't work the same way that the police departments work?
Correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
So, by making that change, we're allowing the police department to run the same way as the fire and the DPW and that, right? So, we're being consistent with the way other departments are being run.
Yes, administratively and management-wise. I will say that when you look at the public safety divisions, whether it's law enforcement or fire, these are very intense, you know, state law-driven positions in which you have to have people who really have those strong, strong professional backgrounds, not only to enforce public safety, but to make sure that the goals and objectives are compliant with all, not only state laws, but federal laws. And that is one of the reasons why the entire profession has gotten extremely complex. And the days of, you know, just appointing officers, you know, and that is the main responsibility that's resting with an elected board, has really gone by the wayside. And it's not any disrespect to the fact that once upon a time, the chief would even tell you, things were different. You know, we are now trying to go through policies that the Board of Selectmen have that are so antiquated that we're trying to remove them because they just don't have relevance today.
So, if you turn back the clock, I mean, we adopted civil service in 1965. So, think about policing in 1965 to what it's evolved to today, 2022, and all the new mandates and training standards that have been placed. Back then, there was no structure. They had to, how are we going to hire a police officer? In 1965, they said, well, we should give an exam, and civil service is the answer, and they'll have some structure and accountability for the officers moving forward. And I think we've left a lot of those principles and components behind, actually. And as you know, we've all heard about the new police reform components that are coming forward through post, and we are unsure at this point what the function of civil service will be moving forward, once post is fully established. I believe that they are going to be a trump card for civil service anyway, even on all matters, you know, discipline, they have their own standards. That's the standards division. So, they're hiring and putting things in place right now, and that's a big uncertainty as well. So, accountability standards from 1965 to 2022 are dramatic.
Well, the whole world is different. I remember when we had select, we had three selectmen, and we had a secretary, and they ran the town. And with all these new rules and regulations and the state, I mean, it's, we've created this, I mean, I look at these offices, and I look at some of my relatives that were officers back in the '60s and the kind of shape they were in and stuff, it's a whole different ballgame.
Well, back then, if you had a good moral character and you knew the appointing authority, it would be, here you go. Thank you very much and good luck.
Yep. Or they'd say, you want to be a police officer? I know someone in my family, chief would up to him and say, hey, would you like to be a police officer? Sure.
Right.
You know, those days are long gone, and I think we have to try to stay ahead of the curve. One quick question, I don't know if this is applicable or not. We're all set with the union and all of that. The offices, are they on board with this?
You know what? I'll have to say.
Or is this even applicable? I don't know.
There are some reservations, all right? Like any change or uncertainty, people are going to have uncertainties. So, I think as a general rule, I think quite a few are in favor of it. I'm not going to say they all are. I can't stand here and say that. But I think at this point, the town needs to take the position that, like I stated earlier, we need to look at the big picture here, and the big picture supersedes what the concerns, in my mind, of what those individual officers may be.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Board members, any other questions on the warrant? Hearing none. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the warrant for May 4th, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, subject to final review by town council.
No, you want to make that?
I'll make that motion, I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
No.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three affirmative, one negative. The next item on the agenda is Noria Energy Incorporated, change of manager application. New manager, manager is going to be Kiran O'Donovan. There's nobody in attendance this evening, the board is in receipt of the application. I will entertain a motion, pleasure of the board.
I will make that motion to accept the-
Do you want me to read it through?
Oh yeah, that would be great.
Entertain a motion that the board vote to approve Kiran O'Donovan as manager as requested by Noria Energy Incorporated, contingent upon the payment of the fees associated with the amendment, Corey Authorization, vote of the entity board, proof of citizenship, satisfactory results under the Town of Oxford singer, civil fingerprinting bylaw and policy, and any and all other supporting documentation required by the board or ABCC, and that the applicant be forwarded to the ABCC as required for their approval.
Second.
I entertain it.
Then I'll make that motion, I don't have my, I don't have it in my packet.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's four affirmative. Next item on the agenda is Oxford Lassie League, request to use the bandstand for a food drive. The Oxford Lassie League has requested permission to use the bandstand on May 21st from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM to hold a food drive, their application is attached. I guess the one question that I had, and there's nobody here in the audience from them, maybe you can answer, Madam Town Manager, or any board members, what is the Oxford Lassie League?
Softball, oh softball, yeah. Oh, that was an easy one.
Oh, girl softball league, okay.
Winding up the bench, you can see me, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
I know.
I would entertain, entertain a motion that the board vote to approve the request from Oxford Lassie League to use the bandstand on May 21st, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM for the purpose of a food drive.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded? Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that is four affirmative. Next item on the agenda is Oxford Women's Club, request for an outdoor business permit to hold a flea market. Paula Parker has submitted an application for an outdoor business permit on behalf of the Oxford Women's Club to hold a flea market on May 14th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with a rain date of May 21st, 2022, on the grounds of St. Rox Church located at 342 Main Street. The application is complete, and we are in receipt of that, pleasure of the board.
I make a motion that the board vote to approve the request of the Oxford Women's Club for an outdoor business permit to hold a flea market on May 14th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, with a rain date of May 21st, 2022, on the grounds of St. Rox Church located at 342 Main Street.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's four affirmative. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. The first item, I will make a motion that the board approve the minutes dated for January 11th, 2022, as written.
I second that?
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's four affirmative. Next, I will make a motion that the board approve the minutes dated February 1st, 2022, as written.
I make that motion to approve those minutes.
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, abstain.
I will vote yes, that's three affirmative, one abstention. Next, I will entertain a motion that the board approve the minutes dated February 16th, 2022, for the open session, as written.
February 16th?
Yes.
As you said? No, do you want to make that motion, I wasn't there?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the minutes of February 16th, 2022, open session. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Abstain?
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three affirmative and one abstention. Next, I will entertain a motion that the board approve the meeting minutes for February 16th, 2022, executive session, as written.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes for February 16th, 2022, the executive session. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Abstain?
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three affirmative, one abstention. I will entertain a motion that the board approve the minutes dated February 23rd, 2022, for the open session, as written.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes dated February 23rd, 2022, the open session. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Abstain?
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three affirmative, one abstention. Next, I will entertain a motion that the board approve the minutes dated February 23rd, 2022, executive session, as written.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of February 23rd, 2022, the executive session. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Abstain?
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that is three affirmative, one abstention. Next, I will entertain a motion that the board approve the minutes dated March 8th, 2022, as written.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes dated March 8th, 2022. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I did send back a couple of corrections-
That've been made.
Oh, they have been made, okay, very good then, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that is four affirmative. Next item, let's see, I will entertain a motion that the board approve the minutes dated March 16th, 2022, as written.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes dated March 16th, 2022. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Abstain?
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that's three affirmative, one abstention, those minutes passed also. Next item on the agenda is the approval of intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Oxford and the Town of Webster for the transportation and treatment of wastewater.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm just going to ask our DPW Director, Jared Duval, to come forward. This is a very straightforward IMA, in contrast to the other IMA with the Town of Auburn, in which there, we expect some changes within the next year. But I'll defer any of the comments further about the IMA. I will say that we had been waiting and actually had reached out to the Town of Webster on a number of occasions, because we knew the date for the expiration of the previous agreement was forthcoming. So rather than having the board convene a separate session again, we did get it today from Webster, Jared drove over there, so Jared, go ahead, if you want to explain anything that's different, which I have been told there isn't anything really, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Manager, Mr. Chairman, board members. Before you, as, as Manager had said, is the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Oxford and the Town of Webster for the transportation and treatment of wastewater in the Town of Webster. And as Madam Manager alluded to, there's no changes to the terms compared to the current agreement that's in place actually to the 25th of this month. It's essentially just extending it for another five-year term. Essentially, probably some key, key terms worth noting, just, just to familiarize yourself a little bit with the contract. So this sets, similar to Oc-, to the Auburn-Oxford IMA, sets a threshold, 50,000 gallons per day for three consecutive days that we shouldn't exceed, which is a little different, obviously, that's, that's far less flow than what we're sending up into Auburn. We also need to test quarterly for certain constituents, biochemical oxygen demand, total suspended stalls, and phosphorus. So we do quarterly sampling and testing that we report to the Town of Webster, make sure we're in compliance. We also do quarterly flow metering at the line, at the Webster line, and that's really the basis for what we're billed, and that also ensures that we're not exceeding those, those flow thresholds. We're billed quarterly by the Town of Webster, they bill us based on their usage charge that they bill their residents plus a 10% additional fee for, you know, their administrative costs and their effort to oversee this, this intermunicipal agreement. So that's really the basis of the agreement. As I said, there's, there's really no changes, the language has not changed at all since the 2017 IMA, and we're just requesting tonight that the board approve the IMA.
Excellent.
Board members, any questions? Pleasure of the board.
I would make a motion to, I would make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the Town of Oxford and the Town of Webster for the transportation and treatment of wastewater.
I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes, that is four affirmative. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Madam Town Manager.
Thank you, just wondering what you were pointing at, thanks, Jared, Jen. So, I'm just going to start off my manager's report, for those who may have attended last week, the capital program hearing was held by the Finance Committee. As you know, prior to that, I held our budget joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and I appreciate the attentiveness of the board members who have been able to observe and participate in those. But that hearing with the Finance Committee was one in which I expressed the fact that I am proposing a funding of this year's capital program to be in the amount of $3.3 million, and I give you the precise amount without rounding off up there. The majority of the recommended project funding comes from free cash in the amount of 2.3 million. We're going to be making some major continued investments in our town's infrastructure, and again, you know, I need to emphasize that our capital needs don't go away, we have far more actual program requests than we have the ability to fund. But this year, we had a, a higher-than-normal allotment with free cash based on the, both COVID pandemic and some of the reserves that wound up actually occurring because of the fact that we were in a pandemic, and usage on a number of fronts had diminished slightly. So, I wanted to say that the next slide here is one in which I just wanted to let the board know that we have continued to trend up, prior to my coming here in 2018. You can see the trend for our capital program funding has been phenomenal and is, been exceeding each year. And I can't promise that every year we're going to be having over $3 million, but I can tell you that based on the financial management practices we have put in place, I continue to expect that we'll have some large infusions to do this. One of the things that it's really important, some people would say, oh, why are we spending money on capital needs? I'd have a serious conversation with them on why you need to fix your roads, bridges, DMs, culverts, upgrade your fleet, and maintain your buildings. Major reason is your bond rating, and if a town does not show and demonstrate that is making infrastructure investments, then your bond rating and your ability to have a financial status, which shows that you understand that it's important to make those investments, will be hurt. I just put down on the bottom that the capital program is really a blueprint for the community in terms of actually going forward with how it will responsibly use local government funds. In my budget presentation, I had actually put this, I call it the three-legged stool, but the lower part, investing in the infrastructure, one, still holds true, and that is why we actually put forward our capital program. And just to remind you also, we, under the leadership of my financial team here, we did put together a capital stabilization fund, which is now earning little by little as we put into it over $300,000. But just, I think, a phenomenal accomplishment from the finance team, the Finance Committee, and all the boards, is the fact that we have, since 2018, invested well over $11 million in our infrastructure. And the majority of that is basically not been money that has been borrowed or increased through a debt exclusion or an override. That is a very impressive investment, if you look at what the trajectory was prior to that. So anyway, we'll have more discussion about that at town meeting. The next item is just to announce, the Trees for Trees Program, last year I had put in for a grant, the town had never applied for any kind of tree grant, I had reached out to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, they have an urban and community forestry challenge grant program, doesn't necessarily have huge money, but they initially start by trying to get a town to wrap themselves around their trees, to get to understand what is important. We know that trees are very important to this town, we have not only historic trees, but we have heritage trees, and there, it has been a program called the Heritage Grant, Heritage Tree Grant Program, which the town in the past could have been eligible for and had never applied. So, this particular grant that we've gotten in the amount of $7,000, $7,000 to be used exclusively for reprint, replanting trees. In your packets, you will see that we have a high-hazard listing of trees, this is our logo for the program that we're starting, and I want to thank Kaylee Olson and also Judy Lochner for coming up with this Trees for Trees logo, to save, replant, maintain the Oxford Community Tree Program. What this means is that we will continue to look at the strategic tree plan that we've have put together on all of our major streets, and what our goal is, is that when we take down a tree, we want to actually replace that tree. If you look at some of the old postcards that the town has, you will see that along with this high-hazard trees that we've had, we have also needed to take them down, but just on Charlton Street alone, where this grant was submitted for, we had 22 high-hazard trees that have been taken down, and, and there's more even down below there. So I wanted to say that the strategic plan is going to call for the replanting of those 22 trees this year, and we are planning out on April 22nd, which is a Friday, right around Earth Day, and also April 29th, the Tree Warden, the DPW Director of Conservation and I are going to be working on bringing in some volunteers to actually put forward the tree planting effort. So, wish us luck for that, I know that Julie Coop, who is the head of the program at the state level, is talking about coming out, knowing that if you look backwards in time, that we've had a number of programs in the past where we've had the seedling program and the like, but nothing that is exclusively where we're planting trees for the town. And, and if you look at the old postcards where we had the Sentinel, the Three Sentinels, and you look at the tree-lined streets of Oxford, we want to make it that way again in one way or another, with a variety and diversity of trees. So, the next item is to let you know that we have a retirement on the horizon, we have been expecting this, but it was hard to receive the notice, we, our Assistant Assessor, Janine Ross, will be retiring at the end of the month, on April 29th. She's been an employee of the Town of Oxford for over 27 years, she's both a resident and very dedicated professional who has truly provided exemplary service to residents and businesses alike in the community. We're definitely going to miss her, of course, that comes on the heels of our other Assistant Assessor, who left us this last year. Of course, that comes on the heels of our other Assistant Assessor, who left us this last year. And I want to not just wish her well, but I know it's been a very difficult decision for her. I know she has a lot of, I think, wonderful retirement plans to spend with her family because she spends a lot of hours here. And we just hope that she'll continue to pursue any deferred dreams she may have on the horizon. We're gonna miss you, Janine. I know you're very humble and quiet. If we can get you here before the board, we will try. But if not, I'll help the board, we'll come to a very quiet type of retirement reception, which is very fitting and for Janine and what she wants. The next item is just to allow the board to be reminded that you're in receipt of a senior volunteer appreciation luncheon invitation. This is gonna occur on the 21st of April, which is a Thursday, at around 11:30. All the members here on the board are invited. The Senior Center Director and I, along with a number of other volunteers, are trying to appreciate all of the other volunteers that come to our senior center all the time to help with everything from food distribution to organizing our programs and committees and driving people and all of those things. So that is going to be something new. We're launching with our current senior director, and I think it's gonna be a great event, and we're looking forward to it. The next item is just to give the board an update that last time in we met, I had reminded the board that we were gonna offer CPR training through the Fire and EMS departments hosting of some CPR training sessions. I attended the first one, and it was very well-run and very informative. In total, we've had over 80 employees that took advantage of these trainings, 43 from the town and 37 from the high school. They're four-hour block trainings. We did it on the Friday afternoons when the actual buildings were closed and people could have gone home and not done the training, but they decided to give them time to become CPR certified. Like I said, the department did a phenomenal job. The Deputy Fire Chief, John Belanger, and Captain Roger Lambert and a number of other people actually served and created this, and I think we're gonna have a safer community as a result of that, particularly in our municipal buildings and town-wide events. The next item is the OCC Health Event. Speaking of having the opportunity to have a healthier community, Shelley Lambert is, as our Director at the Community Center, is teaming up with the UMass Harrington Mobile Outreach Group, and they're hosting a actual Spring into Health event, and it's gonna be at the Jocelyn Park from 11 to 4 p.m. on May 24th. There'll be everything from blood pressure clinics to stroke prevention to educational programs, fitness program activities, sign-ups, and information regarding WIC and SNAP benefits. So we want to get the word out. We still have some time. And if anybody has some great idea or can offer this event and improve on it by some kind of training or health education expertise that they may have, please reach out to Shelley Lambert. I'm sure she'd love to have you included in this. We have also, spring is very busy for all of our departments. We have the Rain Barrel Program, which last year was an incredible program that in particular DPW and Judy Lochner for Conservation put together. We had a record number of rain barrels that were purchased by residents this year. They're giving us a discounted rate through the Great American Rain Barrel Company, and we expect that, once again, a lot of people will be purchasing them. You have to actually go online and order at the Great American website, www.garb.com, under the community programs titled Oxford. You only have till April 14th, so I'm telling you this, so get out there. And if you don't have one, it'd be great to have. The pickup day is slated for April 23rd from 10 a.m. and to noon. And this time, we're gonna change it. It won't be at the Administrative Building for the DPW because there were too many. We had like 93 that we had to find these huge rain barrels and store them. So this time, they're gonna be over on 34 Charlton Street. So make sure you order them before they disappear. Bulk drop-off, everybody wants to know about that, so we always remind people, so I don't get those phone calls, and neither does Jared, that, oh, man, I missed it. When's it coming again? So it's coming up Saturday, April 30th, for residents who are living through the center to the north for Oxford, and Saturday, April 7th, for those residents in the center and south. Both days will go from 8:00 in the morning to 3:00 p.m. DPW staff will be there. You should check out the town's website for the acceptable bulk items and think about cleaning out your homes, your basements, and your garages. Very unique program.
Did you mean May 7th or?
May 7th, I'm sorry. Yep, April 30th and May 7th. I may have said it wrong. It's the timing of the day. So the next item is the OCC is not here. Let's see. This is it. So the OCC Summer Programs. So Shelley has really gone to town to try to really expand our summer programs this year, offering both half-day programming from 8:00 to 12:00 and full-day programming from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. There'll be a whole multitude of different types of activities from what we call themed, experienced, education, and fitness programs to just fun in, fun in the sun. And obviously, the full-day program and the part-time or part-half-day programs will be taking place and have full access over at the Carbuncle Beach House and the Splash Pad, and the summer basketball program will be starting in July and ending in the week of August 15th. That was a record number of attendees. A couple hundred kids had participated last year. So they'll be very, very busy, but on top of all that, they also are gonna have movies on Main, and the, the concert schedule she has lined up is really, really impressive, and there's a lot of concerts. So we expect, you know, the Town Town, which is part of our master plan, to be very, very active, where we didn't have that activity before. And the registration for these, register early before capacity is reached, and Shelley would appreciate that. And the final is to let you also know, I saw seedling in here, but it didn't get included. So Judy Lochner from the Conservation Department is with our, poor thing, with our Tree Warden, is giving away the annual seedlings on the Common. They're gonna have red mulberry seedlings April 26th, which is a Tuesday, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And they'll give them out until they're gone, so come and get a free seedling. And finally, it's, believe it or not, April 18th, Monday, is Patriot's Day in the Town Hall, and certain municipal buildings will be closed in observance of that holiday. So the regular hours of operation will return on Tuesday from 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. on April 19th. And that concludes my manager's report.
Thank you.
Yep. Do you want some more water? I could have given you that.
Selectmen's request. Or Selectmen's meeting, I'm sorry.
I have nothing this evening.
Just quickly, last month, I had office hours. Went very well. I got an opportunity to speak with several citizens. I was very respectful. We had a good conversation about a number of things. So I decided to do that again this month. And our last meeting this month is what, April 26th, I believe?
Correct.
So I will be holding office hours again to meet with any folks on an individual basis. I will be there from 6 o'clock to like 6:45. It can be first come, first served. Or if someone wanted to make an appointment, you can contact the D. at the Selectmen's Office, and she would be happy to schedule an appointment. We can sit down, and I'll be willing to listen to what people think we can do to make Oxford a better community. So I look forward to meeting anyone that's interested and coming and speaking about some of the issues that we have in town. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Norman.
I'm all set tonight.
I am all set as well this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
I will second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And I will vote yes. That's four affirmative, meaning adjourn.